Hi Lions, it's Mr. Salter.
And Mrs. Hall.
And welcome to Town Hall Meeting Number Two. It is our goal today to inform you more about distance learning. Today, we're going to specifically focus on your child's personal experience to get themselves ready to start instruction on August 31st, but really to get themselves ready to log on for our virtual Meet the Teacher on August 28th. We're also going to be providing some reminders and also we have lots of questions that have come in since our Town Hall last Thursday, and we will be addressing those as well. So the first thing that we will do today is to provide you with a tour of what your child is going to need to do to log in, to get to their Google Classroom, the experience that they will have, so that you'll use this as a resource to have your child ready and set up for our virtual Meet the Teacher on August 28th. So at this time, I'm going to have my screen stop sharing, and I'm gonna let Mrs. Hall take over and share her screen to lead that tour.
Okay, so you should be able to see my screen. Right now, I am logged in as a student, so when your child turns their Chromebook on, they're going to click to sign in, and they will need to enter through their district portal. Their district portal, you received a card with their username and password. The username is the letter S and their student number, and then their password is the last four digits of their student number with their initials that are capitalized, and then the last two years of their birth year. Once you enter that, you will see their portal, and it'll tell you that you are logged in as your child. And in here, you should have a tab that says "Google Classroom." If not, there is a search bar, and you can start to type it in, and it will populate for you. So you'll see the Google Classroom. Your child will click on that, and then you will see the kindergarten classroom, or whatever grade your child is in. I'm in as a kindergartner right now, so right now I have a Google Classroom for Mrs. Fleckner's class. If your child has not yet accepted it, you'll see a blue button on this that would say[169.40][169.40]"Join Now," and you will join that classroom. So once you come here, you'll go ahead and click the link, and this will take you into your Google Classroom. You'll see your teacher's name on the top, and then this is what's called the "Stream" page. So the stream is where the teacher may write something, or the children may write something, and you can talk back and forth. You also have a tab that shows classwork. This is where you'll see your children's classwork listed. You'll end up seeing, you'll have the daily schedule here. Right now, the teacher's still working in here. We haven't quite got them up and running yet, but this is where you'll find everything on how to do the different assignments, or what links you need. For example, right now, you'll see there's Fine Arts listed. If I were to click that, this would take me to the Fine Arts program, and I could click on that to go to my Fine Arts class, music, art, PE, and then you'd go back and you'd see the other things. The People tab here, this shows you the teachers, and this also shows you your classmates. Looking on your stream, you'll also see there's a link there. It says "Meet Link." This is where, when your child logs in, this is the first thing they'll do, starting at 7:45 in the morning, they will go ahead and open up this Meet Link. Now, you'll see right now, I can't get in. That's because the teacher hasn't started it. The teacher will start the link on their end, and then your child will be able to join in. So if you see this, don't worry, there's nothing wrong. The teacher just hasn't started the Meet yet. Once they do, you'll be able to join in, and you'll be able to show all of the work and things you've been doing. The teacher will greet them, they'll be able to ask questions, and to learn their lessons. Okay, back to you, Mr. Salter. I'm gonna go ahead and stop presenting.
Thank you, Mrs. Hall. One thing that you can teach your child is that when they do get into their Google Meet Link, there are some opportunities for them to practice, and that's what the 28th is going to be. But if they do ever see that error screen that Mrs. Hall got, you know, we can teach our students to wait, and we can teach them to refresh, just in case the teacher is not in their room at that time. But the teacher will be going over more with you, but hopefully those instructions from Mrs. Hall have given you some support. We will be emailing your family the student username and password card that you can print off and keep in your child's workstation at home, but also if you ever forget it, you can use that formula that Mrs. Hall shared as well. So hopefully this gets your child set up, just the very simple instructions, how to get to the Google Classroom, and then click on the Google Meet Link. The teacher will take over from there, and will help to support your child starting August 28th. So I'm gonna go back to presentation mode again. And so I did want to next provide you with some reminders. So next week, we have two very important events. First of all, on August 27th, we have our Grades 1 through 5 drive-through. We do have assigned times with one hour for each grade level, starting with first grade at 8:00 a.m., and then we have second grade at 9:30, and then we have third grade at 11 o'clock, and then we have fourth grade at 12:30, and then we have fifth grade at 2:00. And your family will get an hour to drive-through, to meet your child's homeroom teacher, to pick up materials that he or she will need this year, like textbooks. Also, if your family hasn't picked them up yet, we have your yearbook and spring pictures. We'll also have your child's personal belongings from last school year. There are old textbooks, and you could use those as review and practice with your child, but there's also gonna be school supplies that your child had, so hopefully that will help you just to kinda get some extra materials or a little bit of a head start on your shopping list. And then also, if your family signed up for it on the Return to School questionnaire, we'll also have a Chromebook available. We are gonna possibly be limited on those Chromebooks in the beginning, so I do recommend that you, you know, please only indicate that you need one if your child, each child in your house needs one. And, you know, we don't recommend that children use iPads, for example, because there are gonna be features where they will need to type at times, so we do recommend that it is either a desktop computer, or a laptop, or Chromebook. And then on August 28th, first from 8:00 to 10:00 in the morning is a makeup pickup time where you'll drive-through. Unfortunately, though, we won't have teachers there for you to meet, but it is a makeup time for anybody in kindergarten to fifth grade. And then, like we've been referring to, the first opportunity for your child to go online into the Google Classroom and into the Google Meet for their homeroom is on August 28th. And we're providing two opportunities for your child. If they're in Grades K through 2, they will have either 10:00 or 11:00. We do recommend, though, that you please come in at that time. This is not an open house where you can come in anytime. We're gonna have two identical sessions, but they will start on the hour, 10:00 or 11:00, you get to choose. And then in Grades 3 through 5, it's gonna be at either 1:00 or 2:00. So it'll be an opportunity for you to get to meet all of your child's teachers. If they're in Grades 3 through 5, they will have at least two or three teachers throughout the day, and it's the first opportunity to start to create connections and relationships with your child's teacher, other classmates, and family, and then to start to go over those tools that your child will need, starting on August 31st. Now, the topic of returning to school is something that is on the horizon. You know, right now, our county is still in Phase 1, but the numbers of positivity rate for testing are declining, and as they decline, you know, we are getting closer and closer to our county possibly moving to Phase 2. And then the state just approved the school board's plan to reopen school and allow parents to have the choice to have their child return to school, or stay home for distance learning one week after the county becomes Phase 2. So we are behind the scenes, working to start to put together those plans right now. The one thing that I really wanted your family to start thinking about, based on the school board meeting yesterday, and the emergency plan that was put together for protocols for students returning to school, is that it will be mandatory that students wear masks. We will be happy to share with you, you know, procedures for, you know, possible accommodations for children who can't wear them for medical conditions, but all students will be required, despite that, to wear masks. So that's something that if your child is not comfortable with that, I do, you know, recommend that you utilize some resources that are out there. For example, this is one that comes from the American Academy of Pediatrics, and just has some tips for ways to help your student get comfortable with that. So just want to start preparing you for that. We will provide a lot more information as the school district starts releasing its plans for reopening, and then we will also create our Cypress Trails reopening plan as well. But just, you know, please rest assured that we are working behind the scenes. A lot of hypotheticals at this moment, but we are preparing for, you know, different scenarios and different measures for safety across campus, and I will continue to bring up this topic at future meetings that we have. So now, at this time, I want to address any questions that have come in this week. As of right now, you can continue to use the same Google form to submit new questions. At this moment, we do not have our third Town Hall scheduled yet, given that next week, August 27th and 28th, we do have those events on campus, the 28th being the opportunity for you to ask questions to your child's teachers. But as we do move forward, we will continue to have more Town Halls, so if questions come up, you're more than welcome to email either me or Mrs. Hall. You can call the main office and get connected that way, but if you ever have more questions, you can continue to use that Google form for future Town Halls. The first question is actually one from last week that I wanted to just add to. It was the question regarding opportunities for small group socialization. My response last week was that we are looking at opportunities for, you know, children to possibly have, like, lunch together virtually, and other options like that, that would be up to the teacher, or maybe with some special support, like from our school counselor, Mrs. Z, and our behavioral health professional, Ms. Cress. But another thing that I forgot to mention was that every day, your child will have morning meeting pride time, and that is developed around the program called Morning Meeting, and it's allowing your child to build relationships and connections with their teacher and their classmates, and that's going to occur for every homeroom, every day, for 30 minutes. So that is the most important and most consistent opportunity for students to have socialization during distance learning. The next question, can parents change their mind to return to school and/or go to distance learning during the year? Right now, we do know that when schools reopen, parents will have the choice to either return their child to school, or to keep them in distance learning. But as of right now, there have not been any procedures developed yet regarding if you then change your mind throughout the year. I do know that in public comments, our superintendent, Dr. Fanoi, has mentioned the importance of fluidity this year, and parents having that opportunity to change their mind. So once we do receive that information, those are things that either the school district or I'll be sharing with you. There will definitely be a process in place to be sure that as a school, we're prepared to know that your child is gonna be returning, so that we can ensure that we have the safety measures in place, and also too, with the mindset that if your child ever does have to go to distance learning, that we're providing the consistency to allow your child to continue. Next question, what if my child needs a laptop, but I don't remember if I indicated that, or I now need one? So to identify who needs a laptop for distribution, next Thursday, the 27th, and Friday, the 28th, I first use the Return to School questionnaire. Question number two and number three related to laptops. Question number two was, does your child have a device with a microphone and a camera? And the question number three said, does every child in your household have one, student in your household? So if you marked "no" for either one of those questions, I did put your child on the list, and we will have one ready for him or her. If things change and you don't need one, and you wanna purchase one, or things change, then please, just when you drive-through, just, you know, let us know that you no longer need one. But if you do need one, and you, things have changed, then I recommend that you either email me, you can call the office, or I know that your child's teacher, if they have had the chance to contact you, have probably spoken to you about it, so you can also let him or her know, and teachers are contacting me. But like I mentioned earlier, we do have a limited amount. The school district is currently working on purchasing enough computers to have the whole district be one-to-one, one device for every child. So right now, our inventory does look pretty good, but if I need to, you know, then we may need to, you know, make some decisions regarding limiting, at least for now, you know, how many laptops we can hand out. But continue to let us know, so we can get your child on the list, and we'll do everything we can to have one for him or her, starting on the 27th. Next question, will progress reports be issued, and will students receive feedback on work? So for this question, our goal is going to be to have everything we do in distance learning mimic what we would have done if we were at school. So we definitely will continue to have progress reports at the mid-marking report. That is a school district procedure. Also too, teachers will continue to provide progress reports on standardized assessments. So like I mentioned last week, students will still be taking what are called USAs, that are unit standards assessments. They'll be taking them on the computer, you know, through distance learning, but they will be able to, teachers will be able to share that progress with you and monitor their progress of the students. And then also, one thing we are gonna work on as a school is to look at our tools that we have to give feedback on work. So that's gonna be something that we do look at, and it's something that we're going to work on, but our goal is gonna be, you know, however teachers were able to give feedback during the time that we're at school, you know, how can we mimic that during distance learning? If children need tutoring, will it be available? So during the day, we have intervention resource already in place. So the first one is through just identification of needs. So in reading, you know, teachers are constantly identifying students who need support, and into the block will be built-in time for students to work in small groups, or they might be working on student work activities during reading, and that's where the teachers can support them. Also, in reading, we have a 30-minute period called "III," that stands for Immediate Intensive Intervention, and that is for students who have been identified, who are below grade level, who need support, and other students who don't need support at that time are either gonna be participating in some enrichment opportunities that we have on campus, or they'll use that time to work on work that's on their level. So they might be working on iReady, or SuccessMaker, or other things that their teacher has for them. And then, we do have tutoring for students in Grades 3 through 5. We typically start that in November, and right now, it is in our school's Title I plan to continue that, and that is twofold. We do have tutoring that occurs traditionally, either before school or after school, with our teachers, but then we also do have two tutors who are fully certified teachers, who have retired from the district, but they like to work part-time for us, and they work during the day, and we have a specific schedule for them. So it is our plan, whether we be in distance learning or face-to-face in November, that we would be looking to start that. So if we do get additional funding from the district to try to support any other type of tutoring, we definitely will embrace that, and we will definitely make that a part of our plan. What option does the family have during recorded instruction? So like I mentioned, instruction will be recorded, you know, when it refers to the whole class, or when it refers to a schedule that your child has every day. So for example, if for Fine Arts, or if they do go to a resource group during the day, and they meet with that teacher five days a week. During recording, like we are right now with me and Mrs. Hall, you probably noticed that when Mrs. Hall started talking, I wasn't on the screen, and vice versa. So the only time that a person appears during a recording is if they talk. So the one thing that we recommend for your family is that if you don't want your child to be in the recording, that you just keep them muted the entire time. We will have other ways for them to participate, either in the chat box, or embedded into our teachers' lessons is gonna be a program that we're focused on called the Smart Online Learning Suite. And that is a program where teachers can take a lesson, like, let's say, a PowerPoint presentation, and they can "smartify" it, is what we say. So what that does is it embeds engagement tools into that presentation. Your child will be taught how to log on, and then they will then be able to access engagement tools, like multiple-choice questions, or typing in answers to questions. So your child won't necessarily have to speak in order to participate during a recording, but then as soon as that recording goes off, and teachers will be very clear to state when recording starts, and then when it's over, then at that point, your child definitely, you know, can be free to follow the teacher's expectations. You know, we will have expectations for how children use their mute buttons, just like we have expectations for how children can speak aloud in class, to have, you know, that cooperative norm in place for every class. But that is our recommendation right now. Your child does not have to turn off their video. That's also another privacy thing, if you'd like, is your child could also turn off their video camera during the recording, but your child will never appear either visually or audibly during a recording, as long as they're muted the entire time. Do students need to follow the school dress code? That's a good question. So we do really want our students to embrace distance learning, to prepare themselves every day for school like they would if they're coming into school. So we do encourage you to start to get your child back into that habit. Mrs. Hall mentioned 7:45 is when they can enter their Google Meet, just like we open our doors for our students at that time, to greet them in the morning. But we're not going to mandate that your child is wearing the exact school dress code. You know, we do allow students to wear a school shirt or a plain t-shirt. Every day, we do allow them to wear jeans. So we recommend that if you do have that ability, that you do get your child back into that habit, because we will be requiring that once we do return to school. But most importantly, we really want our children to have a designated spot at home. So we really encourage you to find that spot at home where they can have their Chromebook, they can have their computer ready, not in their bed, not, you know, somewhere where there's distractions in the background. So really start to work on that. But the dress code piece, we just want them presentable, and, you know, ready, ready to learn that day. Can you go into detail about breaks throughout the day? Now, the breaks that you'll get on your child's schedule, which we put in the mail yesterday, but also you may already see in your child's Google Classroom, are built-in, like Fine Arts, like lunch, recess, which will be on the child's own time at home, so that is like a natural break built-in. But also, our teachers, especially the teachers of our younger students, are really working to develop tools throughout the day that they will use to keep students engaged. So our teachers are working to have quick, but effective, brain breaks that will take during the day to help keep students engaged, so that they're not just sitting all day, but that we have those breaks built-in. So yes, we're very conscious of that. It's something that we're working on. Will there be a central port for student work? I know this relates to the concerns about students having to use multiple apps and websites back in the spring. So first of all, like Mrs. Hall mentioned, the Classwork tab in the Google Classroom is going to be the central location. The Classwork tab will be sorted by your child's daily schedule. So if they start with reading at 8:00, the first tab will say Reading, and in there will be the resources for your child's student work. Now, in science and in math, for example, we do use programs called STEM Scopes in Science, and we do use a program called Pearson in Math. Your child also uses those independent programs, like I've mentioned, like iReady and Successmaker. All these things are going to be inside the portal that Mrs. Hall showed you earlier that your child logs into. mysdPBC.org is the exact portal website, but it's also, there's a sign-in button at the top of the school district website. So that's gonna be our goal. Teachers, like I mentioned, are also gonna use that Smart Online Learning Suite to embed things, so sometimes your child might do their work in there, in which they're participating and, you know, and interacting with that. And then as a school, we're also gonna provide that optional homework section. Remember, though, that's just gonna be optional. We're not gonna mandate homework. The only work that your child will be doing is the work that accompanies the live lesson for that day. So that's gonna be something else that we utilize. Most likely, at this time, we're probably gonna be looking at the homework option being paper-based in the textbooks, so that you can use that at home. It's also harder for teachers to monitor that without you taking pictures of it and things, so we really wanna try to keep everything digital, and we'll try to keep everything through the portal. Will classwork be available until Sunday? Unfortunately, that answer is no. Your child's daily work, let's say Monday's math work, will only be available until 8:00 the next morning, just like if your child had homework. Now, the only exception is if your child does have an IEP or a 504 plan, and they have that extra time accommodation, then that would be provided, you know, due to your child's individual plan. But assignments, though, will be marked past due by 8:00 the next morning. The only thing that would be available until Sunday might be those optional homework assignments, and that's where I talked about us possibly doing paper-based homework. That would be up to you, but no, we're not going to be able to have that flexibility to allow assignments to be turned in until Sunday. We did that back in the spring. That was the model that the district was using at that point, but now, like I mentioned last week, the state of Florida, in order to get our plan approved, we had to show them that our plan does follow a bell-to-bell schedule, just like we were in school. What if I need my child to log out a few minutes before 2:00, so I can pick up my other child? Our attendance procedures will be exactly the same as if we were in school. If your child does log off before 2:00, then your child will be marked as an early release. You know, we always don't, you know, recommend you do this, because we want children to get their full instruction. because we want children to get their full instructional day. I do recommend, though, for a case exactly like this, you know, my question would be, well, what are you gonna do during the regular school day? We, you know, don't allow children to be picked up early every day. And also, once we do return to school, we will be enforcing our current policy in-person, which is no checkouts after 1:30. So I do recommend that you think about that. You know, if your child will be transitioning back to school, we do need to prepare our children to have that seamless transition in their daily schedule when they do return back to school. But your child, you know, will be marked as an early release. And, you know, I just recommend that your family really try to do everything they can to have your child present and participating from 8 to 2 every day. If I'm at work, how can I verify that my child logged in and participated that day? Well, the system that we will have in place will be to notify you if they didn't. And so that goes back to our attendance procedures. You know, we will be marking students tardy starting the second week of school. The first week of school, we won't have tardies because of, you know, giving your family some flexibility to develop your morning routine and morning schedule. We also don't do tardies the first week of school during regular in-person school as well. So you would get notified if your child was tardy that day, I believe, through a parent phone call message. But also, if your child wasn't present at all that day, you'd get notified that they were absent. Now, if they're not at school, though, before 10 o'clock, they might be marked absent even if they attend later that day because our phone messaging system is automated and it captures all the attendance at a certain time in the morning. So that would be one way that you have in order to verify that. You know, the other option would be, you know, to check in, you know, with your child that night to see their progress. That's the one nice flexibility that we have is that with the recorded lessons and then your child's work and no homework, you will have that option to check in with your child at night to be able to support them. So if you work during the day or if you work at night and you need to sleep during the day, there will be some flexibility there for you to be able to help your child with their schoolwork before they have to submit it. And that is it. So at this time, at this time, I just want to wish you all a wonderful weekend. I really appreciate your, all of your support. And any questions that you have, please continue to send them through the Google form. Please call us, please email us. We're always available for you. And we will continue to strive to keep you updated and keep you informed. Right now, we're focused on distance learning. But like I mentioned, in the background, we are working behind the scenes hypothetically in some cases, and other cases, working through protocols that the school board and school district have provided us to prepare for that reopening of school that is still to be determined. So have a wonderful weekend, everybody. And we will happily see you on August 27 for our drive-through. It'll be exciting to see you from a distance in your car. And then we can't wait to see you virtually on August 28.